Wyreka City Council meeting for June 17th to order. The time is 5:30. And we're going to go into closed session, but before we do that, I'll open it up for public comment on closed session items. There's no one here.
So we'll move on to. I'm going to now close the meeting to go into closed session on two items. Regular session meeting for June 17th, 2025. Councilmember McCoy, would you please lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance? The city council did meet in closed session this evening and there's no reportable action taken. Just as a matter of housekeeping, if everybody could please silence their cell phones and city council members, please be sure to speak into your microphone so that the recording picks you up clearly, especially. Thank you. Will the clerk please take role?
All right. Good evening, Wyreka City Council members. I'm going to take role. Councilmember Davis?
I'm here.
Councilmember McCoy?
Present.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Claire?
Here.
And Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. What are the wishes of the council?
I move that we approve the agenda.
All right, second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Claire, to approve the agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There's are there? There are no presentations this evening, so we'll move on to item number eight, which is public comment. Public participation is welcomed and invited at all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda, as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal, slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies as these become public record, and please limit your remarks to five minutes. Do we have any public comment?
Good evening. My name is Jan Osborne. I am a 43-year resident of Wyreka. So I have witnessed quite a few changes, and tonight I don't want to talk about all the negative things that have happened. I want to talk about some positive things and give some pats on the back. First of all, to our mayor. I am so happy to see that she is giving her time from 2:30 to 3:30 every Friday for office hours. So people who don't feel comfortable at this podium can come in and talk to her, and I feel comfortable here, but I can come in and talk to her too. And I'm encouraging anybody who's hearing my voice to take advantage of that. If you have concerns or suggestions, praise, it doesn't hurt to share it. So here we go. Thank you, Mayor Baker. And I'm also wanting to talk about the city's preparation of Minor Street Park for the festivities last weekend. I witnessed young people from a group called the County Schools Summer Work Program. They were in the park one day when I drove by, so I stopped to see what was going on. They had brooms, they had rakes, they were cleaning up the skate park. They even got rid of the graffiti that's on the half, the quarter pipe ramp that's been there for, I don't know, but they got rid of it somehow. They were also working on the picnic tables, which were covered with graffiti when people had etched things into it. They were doing their best to take care of that. The next day, I witnessed them doing a litter patrol of Minor Street Park, picking up trash and getting things all ready. City crews were mowing. It looked beautiful this weekend, and I hope we can keep it that way. I'd also like to thank the city crews who fixed the hole in front of my house in the street. That's had a temporary patch on it since last October. But James and Craig and Marty were there a couple of weeks ago, first thing in the morning, set up the cones, prepped the hole, left to go prep some other holes that were needed fixed. The next morning, they were there and they put the asphalt in, smoothed it all out. Looks beautiful. And if you're driving around town, you'll see little patches like this that they've been doing. I'm also appreciative of Councilmember James Claire and his good listening and his quick thinking, that he might have been thinking of it before. At the last meeting, I spoke about a problem that I'm very concerned with, animal control. During the council member comments, he suggested, which I think is a wonderful idea, and I hope that the council will act on it, that we have a community service officer who can work as animal control and also work with alongside YPD so that our officers in YPD have more time to deal with the negative things that I'm not going to mention. And lastly, I want to say the city staff at City Hall. They are very friendly, very helpful, and very professional, and I think it's a good thing for Wyreka. If anybody walks in there, and I'm in there every once in a while, there's always a smiling face that greets them and always help. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Item A is the approval ratification of payments issued from May 25th through June 7th, 2025. B, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held June 3rd, 2025. C, adoption of resolution number 2025-21, a resolution of the city council of the city of Wyreka adopting the 2025 Siskiyou County, California Local Hazard Mitigation Plan update as the official hazard mitigation plan for the city of Wyreka. And item D, adoption of resolution 2025-22, approving a list of projects for fiscal year 2526 funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. And the recommended motion is to approve this as presented. What are the wishes of the council?
Councilwoman Middleton, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Middleton, a second by Councilmember Claire, to adopt the consent agenda of the city council of the city of Wyreka as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number 10 is a public hearing, and this is a public hearing for the Tax Exempt and Fiscal Responsibility Act, hearing and adoption of a resolution approving issuance of bonds by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority for financing the Shadow Garden Apartments with the recommended city council action to adopt the resolution approving the issuance by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority of exempt facility bonds for a qualified residential rental project for the Shadow Garden Apartments.
Thank you. If I could have given you a shorter title, I would have. All right. Thank you very much. So this is an item that has actually appeared before the city council one year ago, and this is a public hearing, which is required for Tefra funding. We do have John Bachagallupi on Zoom from the Pacific Builders Group, who is the developer representing the property owner for this project. Here we are. So we were contacted by John Bachagallupi with the Pacific Development Group requesting a public hearing on behalf of YSG Apartment Investors, who are the property owner of Shadows Garden Apartments, which is over here on Turi Street. This is a low-income development, or at least a rent-controlled development that has some needed wear and tear and some renovations needed for this development. We've been working with John and Pacific Builders for about a year and a half now on site plan approval, as well as a pre-application meeting to get them ready for their building permit submission for the renovation project. And so what before, what is before you tonight is not an approval of that project. That's gone through the ministerial program and has received its approvals through that. This is for the California Statewide Communities Development Authority. It does require that all applicants for this tax-exempt funding or bonding through the California Statewide Community Development Authority. It requires a public hearing within the jurisdiction in which the project is to occur, and it requires a public hearing on an annual basis. And so since we did this last year, they have been in the queue to receive their funding. They have not done, they have not received the funding from the state yet. And so this public hearing is required to renew their spot on the queue for funding for this. And so I'll open it up to council for questions. And just a very quick thing, there is no fiscal impact to the city of Wyreka. It does not require us to invest in anything. It does not require us to invest in any additional staff time. It is just a public hearing requirement to take comment on the proposed project.
Thank you. And I will open it up to the council for questions.
No questions.
There are no questions at this time. So I will now open the public hearing. And open this up for public comment at this time.
Yes, Mayor and members of the city council. This is John Bachagallupi with Pacific Development Group, and I just want to thank the mayor and council for holding this hearing. We, it's been a long haul, as is the case with a lot of these affordable housing projects in terms of collecting and assembling the funding sources to make the rehab happen. But we're close to the finish line now. In fact, we have all of our funding committed. The Tefra hearing was just a formality for the mortgage revenue bond portion of the funding for the rehab project. So, so I appreciate the council holding this hearing, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have on any aspect of the project. But we certainly have appreciated, you know, the support of the city. Julianne has been great. Gail White has also been great and instrumental in processing and approving the construction documents for the project. Just, you know, looking forward to continuing to work with the city to get this project started. And we're anticipating a construction start in August, so we're very close and looking forward to getting started and, you know, and undertaking a much-needed rehab of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bachagallupi. Is there any other public comment? As there's no further public comment, I will close the public hearing at this time and bring it back to the council for deliberation and action. Does anybody have any comments, any discussion?
This is Councilwoman McCoy. I would just like to say that in my 23 years with the Wyreka Union School District, I made lots of trips to Shadow Gardens, lots of kids live there. It's, it was a nice place for them, for the kids, your parents to have a place to live, have the kids a place to live. It's, they were nice apartments. They were well, they've always been well taken care of. There's always the issue of maintenance, but I mean, I think Bob Dunham, who just passed away maybe two or three weeks ago, was the head of maintenance there for 15, 20 years. It serves a magnificent purpose in our community, gives a place for people to live that have difficulty with paying the 900 or 1,000 or 1,500 a month rent that they need to pay in some places. So I support this.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy. Any other comments? What are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-23 of this city council of the city of Wyreka approving the issuance by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority of exempt facility bonds for the qualified resident residential rental project for the Shadow Garden Apartments.
Council Middleton, I will second the motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Claire, second by Councilmember Middleton, to adopt the resolution as presented. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes. I. Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much for your support, Mayor and council members.
Probably should. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item 11, which is city business. We have the interim human resources director. This is approval of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Wyreka and United Public Employees of California, Loona Local 792, for the Management Employees Unit.
Good evening, council members. I'm Melissa Sandberg, interim human resources director, and I'll present the memorandum of understanding between the city of Wyreka and the Wyreka, or sorry, the United Public Employees of California, Leuna Local 792, for the Wyreka Management Employees Unit. Staff has been negotiating with UPEC for the Wyreka Management Employees Unit to reach a memorandum of understanding. The parties agreed on the MOU that addresses employee compensation and health benefits as follows. The term is four years. For wages, there's a 3% COLA effective July 6, 2025, for all classifications other than benchmark classifications, and a 3% annual COLA for 2026, 2027, and 2028. For equity adjustments, the city clerk will receive 17%. The maintenance and operations manager will receive 13.75%. The planning manager will receive 8%. The top step of the wastewater treatment plant manager and water manager is benchmarked at 37% above the top step of the wastewater treatment plant operator 3. The top step of the municipal project manager is benchmarked at 30.5% above the top step of the staff accountant. There is an agreement on comparable agencies and data points to use for determining the market with future compensation studies. The city's employer medical benefit is equivalent to the cost of 85% of PERS Gold. Employees receive longevity pay up to 5% of base pay based on years of service. Caesar Chavez Day is added to the holiday schedule. Vacation accrual is increased with the elimination of compensatory time. The city matches dollar for dollar what the employee contributes to their deferred compensation account to a maximum of $2,000 per year. Concessions are elimination of compensatory time, overtime, callback pay, remote pay, standby pay, and medical in lieu. All classifications in this unit are now considered exempt under the Fair Labor Standards Act. In addition, the MOU has been reviewed to update the language for accuracy and clarity, as well as compliance with CalPERS reporting. The estimated fiscal impact is $143,200 for fiscal year 2526. The recommended action is to adopt the MOU between the city of Wyreka and the, and the United Public Employees of California, Leuna Local 792, for the Wyreka Management Employees Unit. Are there any questions?
Does council have any questions for Ms. Sandberg? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open this up for public comment at this time. There being no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for any further discussion, comments. Councilmember McCoy?
Ms. Sandberg, I want to thank you for getting a four-year, so we don't have to worry about this every year, because it, we expend a lot of time, I know you do too, and the council does. It's nice to have, get, get something signed in the long term like that, rather than going every year, every two years. I also want to thank you for the elimination of compensatory time, overtime, callback pay, remote pay, standby, medical in lieu, because that makes a huge difference when we have to have management stand, stand by after the fact in not having to pay them. I understand they're going to get compensated, but it's not going to be, it's not going to cost us near as much it would cost us to compensate them in the event that we were paying money. So I want to thank you for all the hard work you've done on this. I appreciate all your time and your presentations.
Yeah, and a lot of the credit goes to John. He's, he was instrumental in that.
Well, Mr. Elsnaab, I will commend you, but I know that Ms. Sandberg also is doing a lot here at your behest, so.
Thank you. Are there any other council comments? What are the wishes of the council?
This is Councilwoman McCoy. I would make, I would motion that we adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Wyreka approving execution of the memorandum of understanding or MOU between the city of Wyreka and the United Public Employees of California, LI, capital U N A, Local 792, U P E C, for the Management Employees Unit, Wyreka Management Employees Union.
Council Middleton, I will second the motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember McCoy, a second from Councilmember Middleton, to adopt the resolution as requested. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
All those in favor of adopting resolution 2025-24, please let me know. Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Yep.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, under city business, is the planning manager. This is a discussion possible action on the Discover Siskiyou Wyreka Events Proposal Amendment and a letter of support for the Discover Siskiyou Levitt Music Series Grant Application. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is Alia Roca Lesra, your planning manager. Once again, the agenda title before you tonight is discussion on the Discover Siskiyou Wyreka Events Proposal Amendment and a letter of support for the Discover Siskiyou Levitt Music Series Grant Application. And I do have Heather and AJ here from Discover Siskiyou to answer any questions you have at the end of my presentation. So in 2024, the city of Wyreka Council adopted a three-year partnership with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council and its tourism program, Discover Siskiyou, to financially support the Wyreka Summer Concerts in the Park series for the summers of 2024, 2025, and 2026. This concert series brings five free concerts each summer to our Wyreka community. The SDC and Discover Siskiyou recently identified grant funding that would provide up to $120,000 over three years to allow for the expansion of the Summer Concert Series. This grant is the Levitt Music Series Grant, and it would support seven to 10 free concerts in our park per summer. The SDC appears to be a strong candidate for this funding, and if awarded, it would be able to expand our current concert series to 10 or more concerts each summer beginning in 2026. So we'd go from five to 10, essentially doubling the amount of concerts we offer starting next summer. The EDC and Discover Siskiyou are seeking approval from the city of Wyreka to apply for the grant, to list the city as a partner on the grant application, and to extend their current summer concerts contract by two years. So our current contract goes through summer 2026. This grant funds 2026, 2027, and 2028. So tonight, you would be making the decision on whether to extend the current contract with the city by two years to match the granting period through 2028. If awarded, the event series name would need to change from the Wyreka Summer Concert Series in the Park to the Levitt AMP Wyreka Music Series, and that's per program requirements for the grant. In terms of the fiscal impact, our current commit, the city's current commitment would maintain the agreed-upon rate of $30,000 per year for, for the concerts with a 3% increase per year to address for inflation. This would mean that beginning in 2027, the cost would be 32,781, and the summer of 2028 would cost 33,765 for a total city commitment of $66,546, sorry. There is also an in-kind labor contribution from the city for the public work staff stage setup and breakdown for each concert. We've calculated this out to be about $687 per concert for that staff time. So for seven to 10 concerts each summer, for the additional two years, this would cost approximately $4,800 to $6,900 per summer, or $9,600 to $13,800 total for the additional two years. If you need any more clarification on that, let me know. So this funding that the city would be committing would be contingent upon a successful grant application. So if the grant is not awarded, this, the city would not be committing any funding, and we would circle back with Discover Siskiyou if the city wanted to move forward with the concerts in the park in the future beyond 2026. So there are two recommended actions before you tonight. Number one, the motion to approve the Discover Siskiyou Wyreka Events Proposal Amendment, contingent upon a successful Levitt Music Series Grant Application. The second action before you is a motion to authorize the city manager to sign a letter of support on behalf of the city of Wyreka for the Discover Siskiyou Levitt Music Series Grant Application. We have two attachments for you, the current contract that we have with Discover Siskiyou, and the proposed amendment for your review. With that, I will invite our Discover Siskiyou folks up if you have anything to add, or if you have any questions.
Good evening, council members. I'm Heather Chipollone, program director for Discover Siskiyou. I have with me AJ Brown, and I believe Sarah Eberens is on Zoom. She's our event planner. She really works all the mad- I have with me AJ Brown, and I believe Sarah Eberens is on Zoom. She's our event planner. She really works all the magic here. So yeah, I think Alia covered this really well. The only things I would add, um, as probably a lot of you know, um, this series was originally started and supported by Mechanics Bank, formerly Scott Valley Bank, and they still are a very large, um, funding partner for this series, and we have run this opportunity by them, um, because it was important to us to see if they were supportive of the potential name change, and they were, so we just wanted to, um, let you all know that. And I did want to note as well that we pulled statistics from our first concert of the year, which was this past Friday. We had 1,600 visits in the park, which we thought was a pretty impressive number. It felt very packed and people were positive. We didn't, that we saw have any issues, um, you know, with behavior or anything like that. It was just a really fun, positive event. We are able to look from our data that tracks visitors via their cell phones where people were before and after the event. And, um, people came from and went to after the concert, local restaurants and stores. And so we just see this being just a really positive impact, um, on our local businesses, a source of income for the city, and yeah, we're just really excited to be partners with you and to pursue this opportunity if you are also excited about it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll add one more thing. Just as you guys all know, obviously, I am a primary stakeholder and I raise most of the funding for these events. And I will tell you, from a sponsorship standpoint, there is a lot of momentum happening. Everyone is very excited about this. And so not only is Mechanics excited, I was speaking with their local, um, their local representatives, they want more. So that is one of the primary reasons they're very much, um, in support of this. They want to keep expanding it. They want to see this continue to grow and to bring that, you know, community spirit back that we had, you know, in years past. So, that's what I note.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions?
No questions.
Well, thank you very much. As, uh, the council has no questions at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. There be no public comment, I'll go ahead and bring it back, uh, to the council for, uh, further discussion and action. Mr. Davis?
When I was in business on Minor Street, the concerts in the park did bring quite a few people down to Minor Street and to shop like their survey showed. Um, I, I think it's a very positive thing, and I think we should support this action if we can.
Thank you. Mr. Claire? Mr. Middleton?
I think I just want to thank Discover Siskiyou for stepping up to sponsor event and take it over, cause, um, as COVID hit and as, um, Mechanics Bank did not return back from the sponsorship, Scott Valley Bank has supported the, uh, concerts in the parks for so many years. That was probably the number one high up there on many things that we bring back to the community was the concerts in the parks. And so it's, uh, nice to see it, uh, kind of get bigger with food trucks, other activities for the children, and not only having great music for people to enjoy. So I think it's, um, awesome that we're going to hopefully expand it and that we continue to be vibrant for our citizens to have something to do in the summer and our beautiful parks being used. So, um, that's what I have to say. So thank you very much. Thank you, Alia, for your work on that.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
Thank you. I'll just say, Alia, uh, Amanda, and Heather, thank you for all your work on it. I've heard for six and a half years on this council, there's nothing to do in Wairega. There is nothing to do in Wairega. I hear it from, from people that are 18 years old to people who are 70 years old. We need more to do. This is, this is part of, this is one of the attack approaches we have. It's just one thing, but we have a lot going on this summer, and I do appreciate, um, all your input and what you've done with it. So, and I've heard some very positive things down on Minor Street from the "As I Go In and Shop", so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. I'm just going to echo all of those comments. So, um, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll make, this is Councilman McCoy. I'll make the first motion, because there are two motions. I think they probably need to be made separately.
I believe it's just one item.
So I can make them at once?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion number one that I will make is to approve the Discover Siskiyou Events Proposal Amendment, contingent upon a successful Levitt Music Series Grant Application. And motion number two, to go along with that, is to authorize the city manager, John Elsnab, to sign a letter of support on behalf of the City of Wairega for the Discover Siskiyou Levitt Music Series Grant Application. Thank you.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember McCoy, second by Councilmember Davis, uh, the recommended action. And, um, what are the wishes? Oh, excuse me. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on this?
All right, all those in favor of this item, please let me know by saying aye. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Claire? Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item C under City Business is Councilmembers Middleton and McCoy. Um, the agenda title is addressing council, changing the public comment time period from five minutes to three minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, this is just discussion only, no, uh, decision to be made tonight, just the, um, feeling of the council and discussion from, uh, the item that was brought back a couple of years ago that we revisited. And, um, after receiving from several constituents out there in the public that, um, when listening or hear that a lot of the people at the podium, they were, um, don't really get to the point of, you know, what they're getting to, and they thought five minutes would be, is too long for us of the City of Wairega to have public comment as other cities and the County of Siskiyou at the Board of Supervisors offers two, and the rest of the cities, mostly in Siskiyou County, offered, um, uh, three minutes as well. So it's just discussion only that, um, our council, uh, have the discussion to bring it to three minutes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy, do you have anything to add to that?
I would just add that this has come up, as I said, last time it came up, I think two and a half years ago. It's probably come up before that, uh, with the past council, it came up when you, uh, Miss, Mrs. Mayor came on council, uh, you brought it up. I, I liked the idea. Um, most, I think all of our other committees go three minutes with, with the city. It allows us to go ahead and, and give three minutes, but then, uh, as in the past, if we want to, we can up it to five minutes at a meeting. We can change it if we have a particular thing where, you know, where we think people need more, more help. I have gotten a response on both sides, uh, of three and five minutes. Um, I'm not, I'm not going to go into the, because I, you know, I mean, as far as, as far as response goes, I think more people that, that want five minutes are usually here for the meetings, and those people that talk to me about three minutes to stop me, or we talk about it, are people that don't come to the meetings too often. But again, as I discussed with some, uh, some of our constituents, that, uh, three minutes get, kind of gives you that elevator pitch so that we hear it, we hear it well, and we hear it quickly and succinctly, and we're going, oh, I see what they're saying. Whereas with five minutes, a lot of times allows our mind a bit to wander, and, um, and, and it might not make as much of an impact. So. Um, and it also, this is a business meeting, that's what city council meetings are. My phone is always open, and I do get phone calls. Um, uh, my door is always open, and I, I, you know, I, and I talk to people every day in the community, and I talk to them, both whether they're private citizens or businesses, or, uh, about what's going on and the things that concern them. And so I feel like I get very good feedback from that. I think it's important to do that on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Jared, at this time, um, would it be appropriate to ask the council if they have any questions of, uh, Councilmembers Middleton and McCoy, or to just go forward with public comment?
You could do either. Um, at this point typically it's for clarification. The council can ask for clarification to that, I mean, they are bringing the item in the staff regardless, so yeah.
Okay. Any clarification? Any, any questions that you have? For Mr., for Councilmember Middleton or Councilmember McCoy?
I don't think I have clarification or questions. I have my thoughts on it. I don't know if that's appropriate time for that. If not, then I can say it later, but.
We'll, we'll bring that back for.
Okay, then I have nothing for clarification and/or questions. Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up for public comment.
Lorenzo Love. Councilmember McCoy and Middleton will tell you three minutes is normal for other meetings. It doesn't matter what others do. Five minutes is normal for Wairega. It has always been normal for Wairega. To proactively cut that time down is indicative of the council's lack of concern for the people's voice. Anyone who can't listen to the constituents for five whole minutes should find another job because you're crap at this one. Make no mistake about this, a vote to restrict citizen speaking time will follow you forever. You'll always, you'll always be known as the council member who didn't want to listen to the voters.
Good evening, council members. My name is Louise Gliotto, and I live in Wairega. And I know this is not exactly on subject, but could Mr. Middleton top, have the mic closer to your mouth? Because we're having trouble hearing you and understanding you, and you do kind of run your words together. So some of us that are a little hard to hearing are having trouble following you, so thank you. Um, I'm here to comment on the five minutes. First of all, one of the, um, things that I had heard, one of the arguments against the five minutes is that it makes the meetings go too long. Well, look around you tonight. How many people do you see here in the audience? How often do we have all these seats full? How often do you have almost everyone in the audience getting up and asking to speak? I think that it, you could have in your ordinance, the ability for the mayor, if we have a full house and, and the mayor asks the people in the audience how many of you are planning to speak, then, then that mayor could have the ability to say, okay, we have a lot of people speaking tonight, let's put it down to three minutes. For five minutes, for most people, it's really scary to get up in front of a microphone, and it's scary to know that you're being recorded and other citizens are watching you, you know, on the YouTube. So for anyone to get up and speak, I commend them that they do that. And if we think about what's going on in just our state government, you know, our senators have over a million people they represent. Our assembly members have 500,000 people they represent. Here in our little community of Wairega of 7,500, we have the ability to be heard. We get to know our council members, they get to know us. Not everybody has the ability to make a point in five minutes. In fact, some of our council members have a difficult time making their point in five minutes. So maybe if we held the council members to a shorter time, then there would be more time for you to hear from the citizens. So I urge you to keep it the way it is now. I think Wairega is special. I really don't care what Monahue does, or Weed, or Mount Shasta. I live in Wairega and I care what our council does, and listening to the constituents, this is the only way you know what's going on in our minds. And I think it's really important when people do watch us on YouTube, when they hear one of us get up, they say, yeah, I feel that way too, but I'm embarrassed or uncomfortable in speaking out. So I think it's really important for the other citizens in the community to hear their fellow community members get up and make a point and speak. So please consider keeping it at five minutes. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Could somebody raise this for me, because I don't know how to do it? And I don't want to learn. That's good, I think, yeah.
Jan Osborne, Wairega. I am one who comes to these meetings frequently. And I am, okay, I am, um, experienced hostmaster. And I know for people who aren't experienced at public speaking, how difficult it is to get your thoughts together. Not everybody has time to sit down beforehand, outline it, make their speech. So I'm asking you to keep the five minutes. It allows more people to come and speak. And also, I want to point out that you're talking about if someone has one issue they want to talk about. What if there are several issues that someone wants to comment to the council? Five minutes may not be enough time to, they could list them maybe, but not give any support for their own position on the issue. Our government to be successful, not just at the city level, or the county, or the state, or the federal, is dependent upon citizen participation. This is, I think, the public comments, one of the most important ways for citizens to participate and be heard by you, our elected representatives. And here in Wairega, we also have a video that is available to people after the meeting, so people can hear that. It's part of communicating and letting people know how others are feeling. And I go with Lorenzo Love on this. Just because everybody else does three minutes doesn't mean that we have to do three minutes. Five minutes, I think, is an appropriate time. How many people have spoken in public comments tonight? Please, each one of you, Councilmember McCoy, Middleton, the mayor, and James Claire, council member, and Drake Davis, council member, please vote for letting people have their piece to say and a time to say it. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to council for discussion.
I want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. Um, the unfortunate thing, as, as Ms. Osborne said, is that people that aren't comfortable speaking don't come to these meetings, and that's, that is unfortunate. We can't, we would like to encourage them to be here, but they don't want to be up in front and speaking. And so, um, and, and to, uh, speak to Ms. Gliotto, who very pointedly also, uh, hits me up, because I know I'm, I can be long-winded, uh, um, uh, the, the thing is, uh, I kind of feel while I'm up here, I'm kind of like a politician, like, you know, like maybe the president or something like that who has a bully pul- has a pulpit. And so, yeah, you do, I think you do, like Donald Trump, he gets kind of a little long-winded and kind of, you know, bilious and stuff like that. And Biden used to do it too, when he could remember things. Uh, but, but, but the point is that to those first two, those, those last two speakers, that it's very important, yes, to have, uh, to have the time to speak. This is a business meeting. Uh, these five panel members are available to you at, at, at any time that you want to call them. Hopefully, I hope they return their calls in a timely fashion. I have no control over them. I know how I return mine, and I know they're not always timely, and Ms. Osborne will probably tell you that, but I do get back when I, with people that call me. So, um, we, we do have the ability to also have three minutes, but change it to five. When, and we've done that in the past where we had five and we changed it to three. This is, but this has come up several times, and as I said, I think the last time was when you brought it up, a couple of years ago. And so that's why I've kind of put it out there, because this is a business meeting. I personally, I don't know about the other four, I get lots of feedback either through the phone, through texts, emails, and just talking to people on a daily basis. So, and I've gotten as much feedback or more that three minutes is, is, is adequate. Again, I, I don't like comparing it to, say, I mean, I would. Um, again, I, I don't like comparing it to say, I mean, we're comparing to the, the, the Congress here in, uh, in California, we're comparing to our national, but you know, it's a little different. When you, when you go to, to speak in front of our Congress, our senator, our house, you A have to be invited and or subpoenaed. And B, you have a 10-minute limit. And if you don't answer their questions, they're going to interrupt you. They're very rude. Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter. They're, they're all very rude. So it's, it's comparing us to, to state or federal politicians is definitely not. It's like comparing apples and oranges, but um, it is important for people to speak, but it's also important. Um, as um, Ms. Gliado pointed out, that uh, people do tune out when someone like me talks too much. And we do the same. So it's important to be succinct. It's important to bring up your points. Um, tonight, um, a person would be able to come up and speak about 15 minutes because we have, we've had seven or eight. Uh, we're going to have seven or eight public comments. So you'd have three times 15. Um, I, I, and, and I will respond to, um, to, um, uh, I'm going to respond because we have a public statement that's written, given to us from Mr. Love. Um, I, I don't think that any of you five, I may disagree with you, but any of you four are crap at your job. I just don't see it. I don't think I'm crap at my job either. I put in a lot of time. You, you all four put in a lot of time. And although I may disagree with you, you're definitely not crap at your job. Thank you. And yes, I would like to see three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Mr. Middleton?
Um, I think I said pretty much what needed to be said, but also that I think when we're sitting down here and we have this packet to go through and make decisions that we're going to not put a time limit on, make an important decision through our packet and an important decision the city has to make. So I think we're a little different sitting down here and having to speak. And whether it be long-winded or not, we have a lot to go over in our packet and respond on or comment or, uh, give the opportunity to, um, respond. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Well, I have a thought. Um, it just way I, I think, I, I think the five minute, I think our coach is up to five minutes. And, and I think the mayor can make the determination, depending on the item, if three minutes is appropriate or five minutes is appropriate. Um, I think that should be left open at the mayor's discretion. I know that Mr. Middleton used that one time when we had a, quite a controversial issue. And it, and it really worked well for us that night because it got through and I thought that was a really good job. Um, and I know the county, I, I believe the county does three minutes and, and you're done. Um, but I like the discretion that is given possibly to the mayor to say, look, we got three minutes tonight. We got a full, you know, agenda. Um, or the next night, say, hey, we got five minutes because the agenda's not very full or or this is a controversial item. So, um, I, I like to leave it in the discretion of the mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Claire?
Um, I feel that obviously I think the key word for all of this is efficiency. For the folks in the audience, the folks on YouTube, and we need to be efficient as a council. Um, I have, I don't have an issue with really the five minutes. What I would like to see though is kind of what everybody's mentioned is can we look at maybe adjusting per agenda or number, number of public speakers? Something where we could go, who, who do we have for public speakers tonight? I get an idea. We can have Madam Mayor maybe adjust the time based off of that. We can keep the five for now. And then if we have a larger item, as Councilman Davis said, we adjust it to three. That way, because the main thing is we have to listen to the people and that's important. That's why we're here. Um, so obviously that's key. And I'm not saying no one up here is saying that they're not saying that at all, at all. But efficiency is what it comes down to. And however that's efficient for us, because we're up here, we have to be efficient to make things go smoother up here and for you folks out there. So, I mean, I'm, like I said, the five is okay, but I'd like to see if there's a way we could figure out a way to adjust it accordingly based off of number of speakers possibly and or agenda size. That would be the only thing that I would throw out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's give you one more question, I guess I should have. Is it your experience or? And I think when, does the county or we have a sign-in sheet where you have to sign in prior, if you're going to be, come up a comment instead of just having people come up? Don't they have a sign-in sheet for the public comment?
Um, that, um, Mr. Middleton, your, your, your question is, um, about the county.
Or anybody that has.
The county. Yeah. Um, the county uses what they call speaker cards and we did, they did ask that speakers fill those cards out beforehand. Then they're provided to, uh, the chairman. And the chairman then has, um, an idea of how many speakers you have for the evening. Um, the thing is, is that you can't make it mandatory that somebody fills out a card. You still have to call for, um, a public comment. Um, but that's a good way of gauging how many speakers you're going to have for, um, each item. And so that could be a way for, in our case, the mayor to use his or her discretion in the amount of time, um, that somebody speaks.
Madam Mayor, having attended and spoken on behalf of the City of Waireka at, um, Board of Supervisors meetings, I can tell you that I was told you fill it out if you want to talk.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, Mr. McCoy.
If you want to talk at a Board of Supervisors meeting, I've been told you fill the card out, you hand the card in. When I didn't have it filled out, I was told you fill it out if you want to talk or you don't talk.
Thank you. So, um, I of course am in favor of hearing from the public as much as possible. And I believe after looking at, um, our ordinance that we have, um, it says, uh, that public comment, um, public comment which will not exceed five minutes in length for each speaker. I feel that that gives, uh, the mayor the discretion, um, to, um, limit, uh, the amount of time if necessary, but it definitely states not to exceed five minutes. And I'm happy with the way the ordinance is written.
Madam Mayor, um, would, uh, in, in the interest of, uh, again, as, uh, Councilman Claire said, of the interest of, in, in, interest of being efficient, um, uh, you can, we can just as easily have a three-minute, um, speaking time and the mayor has, always has the, um, ability to change it to a five-minute or a six-minute or a seven-minute or whatever that person would so, uh, approve, want. Um, so I think that's something that we need to look at in our discussion as well. That, you know, that three minutes doesn't mean that we're, we're necessarily going to hold them to three minutes. If we do five minutes, we're, we're gonna be at five minutes. We have some people that have gone over in the past. We have some that have gone over and in the time I've been on and refused to step down from the podium. And, you know, we've never had to, had to have anybody physically remove them, but we've had to control them to get them down on a couple of occasions. Um, but I would think that, um, it's just as easy to go from three minutes to five as it is to go from five to three. And that way, we're also not asking the mayor and the council at every meeting to make decisions and gauge how many things are on the, uh, the agenda. The mayor and the, uh, mayor pro tem set the agenda. So, um, they're aware of it, but, uh, Councilman Davis, Councilman, um, um, Middleton and myself would not necessarily be aware of it. And there might be a time where we need to sit down and go, ah, no, no, take that stuff off. And we can't be involved in it because we can't have more than two people because of the Brown Act. So it's something to think about. It puts less onus on you to feel like you're, like you are telling your constituents, oh, I, you know, I'm not listening to you, I'm not listening. Three minutes does not mean that any of the five of us is not listening. Three minutes means we're listening more intently. So.
Thank you.
Okay, well, this is discussion only so we can bring it back later if we wish, or it was a discussion to see where it was at, so.
Um, okay, so this was a discussion item only, so there's no action to be taken. So before I close this out, does anybody have any parting thoughts, parting comments?
I would just like to look, have us look into, um, yeah, like I said, and I know people are going to get mad that they don't care what other cities do, but I think for us to run efficiently. And like I said, it is a business meeting that we look into ways we improve us operating at a timely and faster pace as well. And whether it be the cards or whether it be, I just like to have a more of a discussion. Maybe it's not changing the time, but maybe it's another step to make us, um, be clockwork. And so if we could consider that, that would be great as well. Doesn't have to be the change of the time.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, did you have a timeframe that you wanted to bring this back for further discussion?
Not really.
Okay. All right.
No.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item D. This is Councilmember Davis. The agenda title is discussion, possible action, and it's discussion with the city council to direct the city manager and the city attorney to research and develop a mobile home park rent stabilization ordinance. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Um, I think it was about a month ago, there was a, a large group of, of folks came to our meeting.
Speak into your microphone, please.
Am I, am I not speaking into my microphone? Much better. I'm sorry. Sometimes it feels like I have a frog in my throat, but, um, I'll try to get rid of that critter. Uh, they came and they, uh, asked for us to take a study on rent stabilization for the mobile home parks in Waireka. Um, specifically, they were talking about the Oak Ridge Trailer Park in the Crystal Glen. But it would affect all of the trailer parks in the city, um, as such. Um, the people were mostly senior citizens on fixed incomes. We were discussing this with, um, you know, and when you start stabilizing rent income, actually, you kind of go against migraine. Um, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm just saying that I was a capitalist when I was in retail. Um, and a profit was something that you needed to make. But when you start talking about these mobile home parks, we have a different situation that comes up. Um, the ground is owned by the landlord and the mobile home is owned by the resident. And the mobile home doesn't really have the opportunity to move. Um, it pretty much is there. So if the rent goes out of control and you're on a fixed income and, and I am on a fixed income also, and I understand that, what do you do? Do you sell your mobile home and move in with your kids? Or you give it to the park and then they rent it out? Um, and that's not a good thing. People, people that have their home, they want to live in their home. Um, and if the rent stabilization will, will, uh, enable that, I'm in favor of it that way. Um, so I have a friend that lives on, uh, in Oak Ridge. Um, and he has no problem with finances, but he complained to me, talked to me about the rents of when they changed hands, the ownership of that park changed hands was not, it was going up three, four percent ever so often. Um, and he, and I, I don't have the specific amount. Um, but I, it was up, it was up a bit. It, and it did affect, you know, and if you, pretty soon, if you're paying so much for, um, rent, then it starts cutting into the other, you know, food and clothing and those type of things, recreation. So I, I think we should take a look at it and see if we want to do that for the city of Waireka. So that's, that's what I have to say to start with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis or staff? Mr. McCoy?
Mr. Davis, um, I know some of us own rentals. I'm not going to mention names here in Waireka. Would you be also open to, if we're going to look at rent control on mobile home parks, would you be open to rent control on private homes? Because we have rent control like in San Francisco. Uh, my daughter has it in New York. She's been trying to get for nine years into a rent-controlled um, apartment to get her rent down from approximately $2,000 a month for the 242 square feet that she, uh, uh, rents. Would you, would you or any other city officials support that if it, in, in, in doing that along with the rent control of the mobile home parks? Because I think it's a bigger problem than a mobile home park. I think if we need to look at it, we need to look at rent control on the landlords that, um, um, that own apartments and own single-family homes here that rent out. And we, I think we need to, we need to make sure that we restrict um, people from raising rents, no matter what type of home they're in. We need to look out for the little guy. So I mean, that's, that's a question.
That was a question. Thank you. Appreciate the question. Um, I, I haven't looked to be straight up with you honest. I haven't looked at the apartment complexes. I have a rental. And we try to keep it so that it, the person that's renting it uh, can continue to pay. Is that me? I am so sorry. I thought somebody was kicking the table. I apologize. But if it's, uh, senior living, I can understand it. Uh, when it's not senior living, the people that have work, um, you know, that's on the edge.
So are you saying you would support, um, one group of people over another group of people? In other words, you would, you would.
No.
You said another group, but if, but if you have a senior rent from you, but if you have like a 30-year-old family with two kids, you would.
Not at all. I'm just, just saying it may need to be looked at.
Mr. Mayor? Um, Madam Mayor, sorry.
Pardon me?
Mr. Jared?
Madam Mayor, um, maybe I could interject here. We had two issues kind of. First, that's not agendized tonight. Um, but more importantly, like I think I can just interject here. Um, rent control in California is covered by the Costa Hawkins Act, which generally does not allow for rent control in the, um, situations that, uh, Councilmember McCoy is talking about. There've been some, um, bills looking to open that up. Um, but one area that rent control is allowed and is an exemption to Costa Hawkins is, uh, mobile home space rent. So, um, what's before you tonight is whether or not to go forward with more investigation about rent control on mobile home parks. Uh, part of that perhaps could be to provide a, a larger explanation as to why we can't or what state law is currently on generalized rent control so that we, um, can address, I think, what, where your concerns are.
Yeah. So because, because of Costa Hawkins, we, we can ace out people who are in single-family homes. We can just go with retired people in mobile homes and we don't have to, we don't have, nobody else has to be helped. Is that what, is that what I'm hearing you say or not?
What I'm saying.
Because we're talking rent subsidy versus rent control. Correct?
Wha- what I'm saying is Costa Hawkins controls which types of residences can have rent control and which cannot.
So Costa Hawkins allows us to discriminate against, in other words, we can do it for the people who are elderly, but we can't do it for a 50-year-old or a 30-year-old because that's what we're looking, we're looking at elderly people that, people that are on fixed incomes. We're not talking about everybody. We're talking about fixed income, people who live in, um, mobile homes or trailers. So that's, I'm trying to get clarification from you. That's all, sir.
Yeah, so, um, Costa Hawkins doesn't talk about age and a, a mobile home rent control ordinance also wouldn't be related to age.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Uh, so what you're saying is that it would be just all age mobile home parks. It doesn't matter the age of all, correct? Or?
Age of the park?
For the age, I mean, people living all, doesn't matter the age of the people living at the mobile home park. You're just saying mobile home park rent. Control, correct?
Correct. The ordinance that's being requested has nothing to do with one's age, one's income level. It's about space rent.
Okay, the space rent, okay. Because as we're aware that the Oak Ridge Mobile Estates is no longer. A day, it's an all age park, so it's not a senior park anymore. I think there's only one senior. Mobile home park, correct me if I'm wrong, is on Evergreen Lane and the rest are um all age park. So just wanted to clarify that.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Does, does, what, what you're talking about, the legislation or the, or the ordinances, the laws that apply to mobile home parks. Do they also apply to RV parks, which we have a couple here in town that do RVs? And people live in those, they come and they live for a year or two in an RV while they're working on a project. Or is it only a mobile home or a prefab type home?
You're asking about state law or are you asking about the ordinance that's being requested?
I'm asking for your opinion on whether this item, let me read it, let me find it here. Let's see. Work with the city manager to research and develop a local, mobile home park rent stabilization ordinance. Does, would that rent stabilization ordinance apply only to mobile home parks? Or does it apply to RV parks and the man or woman that are living in their RV or in their camper or their travel trailer? On a part of a mobile home park that is designated for RVs and not for mobile homes? That's, that's what I'm asking in a nutshell.
Yeah, so the breadth of what that ordinance would entail would be largely governed by what the council wants to see happen. As I was understanding um what was being asked of the council to consider was a space rent ordinance. For mobile home parks, not for RV parks. And not to get into citywide rent stabilization ordinances under Costa Hawkins. Which frankly, I think you'd be prohibited from doing, um unless the law changed. So to answer your question, what is the ordinance being requested? As I'm understanding the request, it's only for mobile home parks.
So.
But let me explain.
Okay.
If you want to go in and have us um evaluate how. RV parks or portions of mobile home parks used by RVs could also be regulated, we'd certainly look at that as well. But I have no opinion on what could be done.
Okay, so that, so that I know at least two RV parks that are probably more than, there are more. Excuse me, two mobile home parks that have more RVs than mobile homes. You're saying that the RVs in those mobile home parks. What I'm understanding, let me ask, is that they would not be affected if we pass this ordinance?
I didn't say that.
That's, that's why I'm asking for clarification.
No, I didn't say that at all.
So what are you saying?
I'm saying that it's something that can be evaluated, that we would need to look at what can be done under California law. We could provide some options as to what the council might want to adopt, given your situation here. And um it may be that you could set space rent. So that depending on if it's a mobile home on Jax, um, a manufactured home. It's a, an RV on wheels that's able to move, that all of those are addressed. I don't know um what the current status is, because I haven't researched the current status on it, because you haven't given me the direction.
Yeah. Yeah, I, it just concerns me, Madam Mayor, that, and I don't know how we're out here feels, but it concerns me that we. A lot of us feel that we'd like less government and yet this would be voting more government. We'd be, we, we're gonna get into people's, uh, we're not getting into people's bedrooms, but we certainly are getting into their homes. And it's, uh, I'm, I'm uncomfortable when people start telling me um. Uh, how I run my business and how to do that sort of thing and, and as far as rent goes. And I think if you're gonna go with rents on mobile homes, I think you. I think that's, that's really kind of the smallest thing. I think the rents for the average citizen here in Waireca are, are exorbitant. Um, for what they make in, in Waireca. So I think you need to go further. But again. I don't like to see the government get involved and take over um these sorts of things. I don't think the government has any business in it. So.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I have a question of Corey. Um, Mr. Middleton, what, what park did you, excuse me, what park did you say was the senior park?
I believe it's the, um, a few mobile homes or manufactured homes, whoever wants to, the identification of them, is on Evergreen Lane.
Okay. Thanks, Corey.
In Waireca only. I'm not speaking of, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's no uh further questions from council. I will open it up for public comment at this time.
Good evening. My name is Judy Crawford. I've been kind of the coordinator of this um project. Just simply, it came to my attention in our park, uh, our rent has raised up. Nine, at least nine percent for the last three years. In Oak Ridge, it's been five percent. And uh. We need to address is that we own our homes. It's a lot different than in an apartment. And we are very conscious and thankful that you are approaching and willing to look at this. We are a captive audience. We own our homes. We can't move as uh. Councilmember Drake, Drake spoke about. And so. About approximately five percent of your population lives in the mobile homes that are in, in the area. And I, I know in our park, there's a number of folks who are at the limit of what they can expend. So we're just great, grateful that you're willing to look at it. And uh, the only other thing is that our owners for these two big parks are out of the area. They own parks all over the nation and are not local. And are in it for the money. And we are, we are very nervous about what the future holds for us. Those of us who are in fixed income. So thanks again for considering it and um. Will support you in any way you can. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
My name is Rick Andreessen. I live at Crystal Glen Mobile Home Park. I moved there about three years ago. Um, at that time. My rent was just under $500 and with the new increase scheduled for November, it will be over $750. So it does go up every year. We don't, obviously don't have any control over that. Um, Mr. McCoy, my biggest problem is because I have an investment in a mobile home, I cannot just pick up and leave. As other RV owners can or trailers or whatnot. I paid, I don't know, $150,000 for my home. I, I can't just leave. Um, it make it difficult to sell because of the rate increases. There's been um one mobile home in our park that just recently sold, was on the market for over a year. So that's something that'd be considered. Um, my rent only includes water, does not include any other utilities. Uh, we don't have any other amenities. Maintenance has been lax, lacking. I also understand that the businesses that own these parks have a right to make a profit. I just think it should be something considered reasonable. Uh, cover their expenses and then some extra. Uh, I don't think that's unreasonable. But I don't think it's fair to, in my opinion, gouge the residents that have no choice but to remain there and that. As was mentioned, many of the residents are on a fixed income. So their rent increase has to come out from somewhere. Whether it's food or medication or whatever. Um, we're always talking about affordable housing. Mobile home can be affordable housing. Um, so it's just something that we need to consider so people can remain in their homes. And I thank you for the consideration of this.
Any more public comment on this item? If not, I will bring it back to the council for any further discussion. And uh, the recommended action is um. For the city council to direct the city manager to work with the city attorney to research and develop a mobile home park. Rent stabilization ordinance. That's the, that's the action that we're considering. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. To me, again, this is more than rent stabilization for um, for mobile homes. I think if we're gonna do it, we need to do it. We need to look at rentals here. Apartments, we need to look at duplexes, we need to look at single family dwellings, and we, we need to figure out where we are with all of these. I think we need a lot more information. Uh, we need to know what percentage of. What, I wrote down what's percentage of people who own their mobile homes that live in these parks. What is the percentage of those who rent? What is those of the, of the percentage of those that live in RVs with it specifically within the mobile home parks? But more importantly than that, um, I think that. Um, I would not support it at this point in time, because uh, Mr. Jared already has. I don't know, twelve or sixteen ordinances on his desk that he's been working on. I know he's working diligently on them. Uh, that we are, are things that you're working on for us, sir, that, that we, that we're, I, I know we've been on you, we've been keeping you busy, and I think we need to get that cleared up. And then maybe bring it back in a couple of months when, when some of those things are cleared up and John and the council, we, we've gotten those things from, from Mr. Jared. And then rediscover it.
Thank you. Mr. Middleton?
Well, I think at least we, I think we need to. Do our homework first as um. Mr. Jared said, do some research on what we can do and not do and what that's about before we develop, because it says. Develop a mobile home park rent stabilization. So. To me, that's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, to me, that's saying that you're gonna go research it, develop it without us knowing what we can do or. How, what the increases each year is it, or? Without knowing, I don't know if I would say, yeah, let's do this. And you come back and say, okay, this is what you can do, let's adopt it. I would. Want to know what that entails, because Waireca has never done this before.
No, I would not be bringing something back. I mean, with the direction is to go research, find out, draft. A draft ordinance and, and what that entails is lots of, I mean, it's a form of something that you would then tailor. But it would be based on what others have already successfully done. There's something like ninety cities statewide that have. Have done something similar. And certainly, I mean, this is just one option. The other option is to, to bring back just simply fact finding before drafting an ordinance. And in staff, um, with the help of our office, would bring back all of these issues and certainly bringing back. Um, as Councilmember McCoy suggested, what are rent control options in California? The three. Basic types of, of, of housing out there. Um, apartments, um, homes. Uh, for rent and uh mobile homes um slash RVs. And so that's just the basic, just. Data. Then the other aspect of this is a form for first reading. And typically, we don't get to first reading on something like this, just out the box. Of here it is, and next meeting it gets adopted for uh, or introduced for first reading and then a month later adopted. It's usually a longer process.
Okay, thank you. That's the question I had, but I would probably be in favor to um. Do some research, maybe like just. You know. Bare minimum, but I think we need to look into it further.
Thank you. Mr. Claire?
I would be agree that we need to do a little, keep research on it and look into it and see what our options are and compare and see, so we don't just. Do something off the cuff, but I think it's definitely something that needs to be looked at and addressed, but. What you said there before, it seems to work just fine, just data, fact gathering, whatever that is and go from there. That's what I understood.
Mr. Davis, did you have any further comments?
I think that's what we should do. Exactly. I think we should look at the facts and then proceed on forward if we want to. Um, I think that uh, the rent stabilization is something that's kind of. Controversial and not a lot of cities are doing it, e- even though there are some that are doing it. I, I'd like to know more of the facts myself. But I think we have an issue here that needs to be dealt with in some manner if we can. So. Do we need a motion or something here?
Madam Mayor. Yes, I have a comment I'd like to make.
Go ahead.
For um, we take action. I, I'm in agreement um that I think this is something that. Um, I would like to have more information on. Um. Um, so I am in agreement that we could ask our um staff. To do some further research and come back at a later date, um, say two or three months down the road with um. Further information for us. That's where I'm. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
May, may I ask a question and, and of the city manager? I don't want to put you on the spot here. Um, do we have, what, what are we looking at as far as, because we have given our attorney lots of stuff to do. We keep him busy. What do we have that the city council and you are waiting on that is of timely fashion? If, I don't mean to put you on the spot, that you see. As it, as things in a timely fashion, because I don't want to take away time. My aim is not to take away time from him. With all due respect to the people that are renting right now, because we have other things that have been sitting in the queue now for. Three or four, or five or six or seven or eight months. And we, we'd need to get those through the queue first, I think.
Councilmember McCoy, I'd have to look into it. We do have a list of projects that we, we review and talk about every Monday, but um. I would, I, I don't think it would be appropriate if I just uh. I'd have to go through them and, and uh, and look at it a little bit more in depth.
Thank you. So could I ask?
Can I, can I mention something? Um, just as far as knowing the future agenda items that I have in my office. This is something I think would be a few months out, September, October. If that.
Could I ask that this council hold this back? For a few months and, until we let Mr. Uh, Jared get caught up and, and we have got things from him that we need. That we've asked him to do over the past uh months, and then we come back to it and, and we hit it hard.
Is that a motion?
But don't give him anything to do, don't give him more to do right now.
Is that a motion?
I'm, I'm just having discussion with you at this point in time. I'm not, you know.
Mr. Claire?
But if we did this option, if. John, if you're able to get together and take a look at the list of projects that where we're at. And then we come back to the next meeting in July, and then we can get an idea of where it's gonna fit in with everything. Would that be something that'd be appropriate for everybody? That way he can get some idea of your timeframes, if that way we're not jamming up the process or anything. You can take a look at your schedules, whatever you need to do, and then we can come back in the next meeting in July and go, okay, this is where, how it's gonna work out. Is that an option? That's kind of what.
Is that a motion?
No, that's just a discussion, a question too.
I, I guess, uh, I don't know, I don't have to make a question. But I don't, I don't want to keep coming, I don't, see if we. Come back and to say, oh, come back, we'll discuss it in July, August, September, then we have to go another meeting, then have them go out, so we're talking about December. If we just say now, we know we're busy for three months or four months. And then get through whatever, we don't know what it is, but I would say that if we could just request the information due back by October. First being October, I think that would be sufficient now, amount of time.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion, is that we bring back, I guess I don't have to re, redo the whole thing, right? I gotta find where we're at. I gotta find where we're at.
Madam Mayor?
Here we are.
Oh, excuse me, uh, Mr. Middleton, um, has the floor.
I'll make the motion to, um, direct the city attorney and city manager to do, uh, the research on the development of a mobile home park rental stabilization ordinance and bring that back, I'll say the second meeting in October.
I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion?
My understanding is that would include all of the other options of rent stabilization that was mentioned by Mr. McCoy?
Just the, just the mobile home park as I'm making the motion.
Okay.
I'd like to see the figures included in that, uh, uh, story.
Because rent control is completely a different ballgame. I know, that for a fact, it's a really difficult thing.
Okay, so, um, we have a motion on the floor, um, by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Mayor Baker, um, to direct the city manager to work with the city attorney to research and develop a mobile home park rent stabilization ordinance to be brought back to the council for further discussion. The second meeting in October, 2025. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote? Good evening, all those in favor, please let me know. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy?
Nay.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Claire?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very, very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item E for Madam Mayor, and it's the mayor committee appointments. And typically when, uh, uh, a new term, um, begins, appointments are made to various, um, committees for that term. And so I'm prepared to make appointments this evening. Before I do that, is there any public comment on committee appointments for council members? There is none. I will bring it back to the council and these are my recommendations um, that I would like to see, um, uh, for the finance committee for a two-year term that expires, um, in January of 2027. I would like to appoint, uh, Councilmember McCoy and Councilmember Claire. Uh, for the fire safe council, uh, Drake Davis. Um, for the call your interpretive in information center, myself. Um, and then for the continuum of care. Is that the full title? I don't have that in front of me. Um, I would like to appoint Councilmember Middleton.
Okay. You're talking about the CCC, correct?
Yeah, the continuum of care, yeah.
Okay.
And it looks like those are all the appointments that would be made at, uh, the mayoral, um, level. There are other, um, committees and commissions that we sit on, but those are made by other organizations.
I'm sorry, can I have the finance committee one more time, please?
Um, Councilmember McCoy and Councilmember Claire.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Do you repeat those? Would you repeat those again, please? All of them?
So the finance committee is Councilmember McCoy and Councilmember Claire. The fire safe council is Councilmember Davis. Uh, call your interpretive in information center agency is myself, Colleen Baker. And the continuum of care is Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. So you want me to be the voting, the member, um, they do have to have an alternate, alternate? Do you want Councilman McCoy and I to switch those position, those roles? I'm the alternate now. Um, Councilman McCoy is the, um, main voter, but if I can't be there, then he steps in for the vote or whoever you want to recommend, but there has to be an alternate as well.
Okay. So, um, at this point in time, I'd recommend that our, um, interim city manager be the alternate.
See be a voting member if I wasn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if I was gone, if I was gone, he'd have to be a voting member and be the city manager.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Councilmember Middleton, we'll, we'll make you the primary and we will make, uh, Mr. McCoy the alternate.
We'll switch. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for stepping up to the plate on these. Um, um, item 12 is city manager and staff reports. Mr. Elsnapp.
Good evening, council. I just have a quick one. I just want to let the city council know that our July 2nd meeting, um, was canceled according to our 2025 calendar. Um, and we'll plan on meeting on the July 15th for our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Uh, so I just wanted to give an update on community development department. So in our code enforcement department, since the beginning of the year, we've taken 64 code enforcement cases. Uh, we have closed 12 of those 64 cases. Our priority response is for code, building code violations that threaten public health and safety, as well as the health and safety of the tenants within those units. We've had um, at least 27 reports of those types of, uh, cases which require a lot of time, uh, to go through and record those, get inspections. And then there is a new state regulation that requires us in apartment buildings, if one unit has an issue, we are required within 24 hours to inspect the other units of this, for the same issue. Uh, so it has been causing quite a bit of work for us to go through those apartment buildings and come up with the, and address those subpar housing issues. We are also prioritizing unpermitted housing units. We've had about 16 reports of unpermitted housing units that are in subpar condition. Uh, so these are units that have never received any building permits, have never received any inspections and are also in a state that threaten health and safety. Uh, so we've been prioritizing a lot of those calls, which take a lot of time. Vegetation, uh, management letters have been sent out to property owners. We're now moving to second notices for properties that we and others have identified as having high risk of fires. So we're going to be more focused for the second notices. Um, just for everyone's information, since this happens every year, it always surprised people. We send a courtesy notice to everyone. Um, we do it every year. Uh, no, we are not picking on you. Um, people seem to forget, um, that we do that. So our focus again in code enforcement is compliance over penalties. So we are giving people ample time to come into compliance, especially those who are on fixed income, limited mobility and showing movement towards compliance. Um, so again, if people are upset with the pace that we're taking, sometimes we can't move faster because of either eviction issues or uh, abatement orders or things like that with the court system. In other cases, the owner is limited in their ability to address the concern and is making small progress towards that. If the city council would like to change the way that we're doing code enforcement, I'm happy to do that in an open session item where you prioritize different priorities than what we have so far. Uh, within the building department, we now have automatic residential re-roof permits available. Um, with our residential solar permits, so you can find those application portals on the city's webpage under the building department. So that is only residential re-roofs. And so that's a one-click automated, uh, approval process. Um, we still do have, uh, application fees related to that, that would be paid in addition to the portal. Um, but that is now a quick serve for people who want to get their residential re-roof permits. Uh, in resilience and hazard mitigation, we had the prescribed burn that went extremely well for Green Horn Reservoir. We burned about 22 acres over a single day with smoke appearing for about two, three days max. Um, we're developing a highlight video of the operation as well as an educational video discussing, uh, why we chose prescribed burn for those areas. If you'll remember, our goal with the land management of Green Horn Reservoir is to showcase a mosaic of different land management types for fuel management. So we will also be moving into other types such as understory, uh, mechanical, um, removal, as well as other types of timber harvest in the next couple of years. Working on those plan sets, um, to do that. So we're hoping to showcase those for especially like large land owners to show them different things that they could do for their properties to harden them towards wildfire. So our green waste drop off is closed for the season. We've made the decision to close the drop off days until fall due to the dry weather. So when we do get an excessive amount of vegetation, um, we are concerned for any, uh, of the air curtain, any type of ash that could potentially come out of the unit. Although it does negate a majority of the ash that we would see from other combustion piles, um, we just feel that it's better safe than sorry to not burn during the summer months. Uh, we're also running a survey for people to take regarding their knowledge of the event and how we can better communicate the green waste, uh, drop off days. And so we will also be doing that at the farmer's market. So again, we do have a city farmer's market table every Friday. We promote different programs for the city. So if people want to come by and talk to us about different programs, we are available there, uh, four to 6:30. And then for planning, we're finishing up Title 15 subdivision code audit. Uh, we are presenting the general plan land use zoning code and design standard direction to the planning commission tomorrow for additional input that you heard at your last meeting. And then a majority of our time has been facilitating environmental review of private projects and city public projects. We have a number of infrastructure projects coming to you, uh, soon. Uh, those require a lot of environmental review on them. And then also for some of our private projects that will be coming before the planning commission and city council at various times.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you so much. Oh, the chief, the chief, come on up.
Madam Mayor, council members, um, it's actually Jerry's night to speak, but I have a, a request. I've been getting a lot of calls about the homeless people that have been living in cars and in buses and stuff, and we have some subjects that are camping on sidewalks and we, a lot of people are complaining that we have a camping oriented that I don't do anything with. So I would just like to have the council think about that. It's going to be a long time for the next meeting with a skipping one. And we were supposed to start enforcing it in May. It just kind of ties my hands for the people, especially, we have one individual especially just sleeps on the sidewalk and completely makes a mess everywhere. We've written there seven tickets for littering and still can't stop it. So I would just like to, at some point in the meeting, we can bring that up and find out when I can start using this camping orange that we wrote a couple of years ago. Thank you. That's all I have. I'll let Jerry do his speech, let you have questions.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, it's my turn on the, turn the barrel this time. So just give you a quick update on some stats there on, uh, what Warrica Fire has been, um, up to. So year to date, um, we've had approximately 10 building fires. And those vary from, you know, structure fires to, um, smoke in the residence, that type of thing. So they're classified based on uh, what we get along upon dispatch. Generally, sometimes we'll reclassify them. So 10 of those, we've had 656 medicals. I think we're, we're definitely over that now. We're at 935 calls total for the year. Um, and I'm even missing a couple since I've been here, so they're always going. Um, vehicle accidents, we had, um, 16 with no injuries, seven with injuries. Public assists, we're at 70, which seems a little, a little low, but we get a lot of lift assists too, as you probably already know. Um, more importantly, on specifics of what we've been doing, uh, there's been several vegetation fires, as you probably have known. For those of you that have the app on your phone, watch duty, it's a great app. If you don't have that, I recommend it. Um, it'll tell you, uh, it gives you updates all the time and you follow what's going on. So if you have something in town, on the edge of town, family in those areas, it really gives you an update on where the evacuation zones are, you know, covers everything. So it's a great, it's a great app. So, uh, we have sent, um, personnel and equipment on six to seven of those fires. We had, um, a couple here in town or right on the edge of town. The others were, were definitely out of town. And so I know, um, our part in that was definitely helping to keep, um, the fires at a minimum as far as acreage goes and um, I'm glad to hear that. And no injuries. So that's the most important. Uh, we held interviews last week for firefighters and fire captains. Those went extremely well. And with, uh, John's help and, and, uh, some of our other staff, we'll hopefully get some of those folks hired on as soon as we can. Um, we had a possible field save. I was not able to, uh, and what I say that is saving a human life. So looking into it before the meeting, I was not able to get, uh, verification, but upon the, uh, actions of YPD and Warrica Fire and the ambulance service, um, the, when the person left the scene, they were breathing on their own, had a pulse and we got him to the hospital and, and unfortunately sometimes it's hard to, to get those, um, follow-ups because of HIPAA and some other issues. So, um, I will follow up on that too, because I always got to pat, pat our guys on the back and any of the first responders that take part in that, because so many times it's not successful once you initiate that. So that's what we're here for. We can say, one, it's worth all the training. We had a pancake breakfast on Sunday, um, as part of the, um, Father's Day car show that went on, had a great, uh, turnout, served over 200 people, saw Madam Mayor waiting in line. I wasn't able to come talk to you because I was busy cooking.
Busy.
I was busy. Thank you for being there. Anybody else that I might have missed, I apologize. Uh, and most importantly, or one of the most important things I have for you tonight is be advised that, uh, June 9th, um, I instituted the burn ban for any, uh, dooryard burning within the city due to fire, uh, adverse fire conditions. And that's in effect until we lift it sometime when we get sufficient rainfall in the, uh, late fall, winter, that type of thing. So as we all know, fire season is expanded now to, you know, very late in the year. So we're going to be careful with that. So my message is report smokes when you see them, because it's rather go get, get them when they're small and not have those grow to where they become very difficult. So nobody should be burning right now. So that's all I have for you. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Um, Chief, how are we as far as the ingress and egress up at, uh, the mobile home park up above the hospital? Are we, I know we, we've worked hard on that for years and I think you guys cut it, we cut a new road. Are we still fine up there if those residents at that mobile home park have to go down?
Oak Ridge?
Oak Ridge.
Yes, sir. I have, uh, to be honest, totally transparent, I have not been up there, um, recently, but, um, and I will make it a point to do that and get. No, because that was, that took a lot of effort, um, getting all that cleared and and I got to check in with some of the, maybe the new management that's there. I haven't been so busy with other items, but thank you for bringing that up.
I appreciate it.
I'll look into it and get back to you.
And then as many times as you can post on Facebook, I talk to people that are burning in and around my area and I go, you know, it's 95 a day. I guess people just, I don't know. I'm not sure what happens. I don't know what short circuits up here. But the more you can post it on Facebook at least.
Sure.
Um, and I always just blast it to get it out.
It's, we try to, we try to, uh, coordinate with CAL FIRE and this year, um, and we always, we always talk to them, say, because it's confusing for people. They see one post by them, so they think it doesn't apply to them or they, they think it does. But if they're done the same, the same time, this year they had some sort of um, meeting in Sacramento, which was the end of last week. So they, they're, I think, uh, I forget what date it is coming up here very soon as far as when they're going to institute the burn ban. But for the city of Warrica, I just stuck with it, so it's not confusing. And it was well, you know, well, it's very warranted as far as I'm concerned, because as you've all seen, the, the fuels are curing up and drying out super fast. They have been that way for, we've been fighting fires since May, so.
Thank you, sir.
It's definitely for over a month, so thank you. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the final item on our agenda tonight is mayor council member reports, statements and requests. Who would like to go first tonight? Mr. Davis?
Um, the, the Green Horn burn was one of the items and it's been reported on. It's very successful. So that's good. Um, and the other thing I attended was, uh, Heritage Days and it was good. Enjoyed it. Other than that, the fire safe council didn't have anything going.
Thank you. Mr. Claire?
Uh, I just want to thank everybody this weekend for the Golden City Days. Uh, city employees that set up, took down the vendors, everybody for going out. Uh, it was a good turnout. The car show was a good turnout. The public, it was a really good showing, so. Um, the folks that, uh, Ms. Osborne spoke about earlier that cleaned the park, I saw them too and I really appreciated that. So thank you everybody for everything for coming out and that was a really great turnout. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Middleton?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I attended the Golden City Days on Saturday for a little while and it was great to see people down there supporting our businesses and, um, listened to music and, um, it was really busy downtown Friday night and Saturday and Sunday as well. Saturday I went down for a little bit. And um, it was really busy downtown Friday night and Saturday and Sunday as well. Saturday I went down for a little bit, but not too long. I'll admit, I just went down to get something to eat, but on Sunday. Um, so it's great to have those events back and um, our citizens supporting them. Um, I would like to request um, per our Chief of Police, that we do rather be the first meeting or ask um, to come back on a special meeting. If we cannot meet before then, because I do think it's crucial that we do decide to go ahead with the enforcement of the um, no camping ordinance, because it is getting out of hand. It is, where I'm seeing three to four guys on the sidewalks. Uh, it's getting worse. I'm seeing cars in the um, off of Oberlin that are camped out. I'm seeing RVs, and it's looking just um, it's not looking good for our city. So I would ask that we bring it back for, to give them authorization to start enforcing the ordinance at the next meeting scheduled, or we do come back at a special meeting beforehand if we decide our city could wait another month. Or I see it getting worse because of the nice weather. So I would um, like to hear the councils, um, if they would like to wait till the next meeting, or if we would like to have a special meeting. But I think it's, the time has come where it's time we enforce this. We do have residents moving into the uh, Siskiyou villages. I see there is residents taking up occupancy there, and from what I understand is that the Low Barrier Shelter um, over on um, base camp is going to be opening without the kitchen. So they are getting the green light to start moving, and I know they moved in their offices. So I think the time is now that we start enforcing what we uh, decided on and start um, allowing our police chief and our uh, police officers to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
I do want to uh, I want to thank all the ones for the week, totally getting creative, come down through the, you know, Siskiyou, uh, town. I mean, what's it called, on a golden door. They, uh, last year with July before we got that all the grass down the street. It was wonderful because we don't have to fire danger law. Um, Gold Street, and then it goes over, and then goes over. So a lot like that. Golden City, as you said, with plenty of colors, great uh, I enjoyed it. I, I had five little kids come out from uh, Orange County, and it's been a lot of fun. Stimulated the economy, played a great, uh, very time there. Um, I uh, I had four texts and phone calls, uh, as uh, Juliana mentioned. People that people text their calls and asked whether they were pickpied or digging on, as a week they, and I, as I do every direction, I mean, I got one.
I got one.
Flying the alley where, I don't know, all of the people, and I had to go to, I, I got like four or five different kinds of that fence. And so, I mean, I know people think that we're a little forward, but actually, it's done. I think it's done in love. Um, I am looking forward to having Corey, the Golden CLC. Um, uh, our last meeting was, my last meeting was uh, last week. Um, Corey, you have the um, January ninth, one third of the open.
January ninth?
Excuse, uh, excuse me, uh.
That's all I got a while.
Uh, Mark, well attended. That day we started the first week with five booths, the second we got, we had seven or eight. I think this week we had eleven. It's wonderful, it's growing. Um, it's great to see the city there, Julie Jones there. There's uh, people deciding the last time was a leader, and the survey was there, but there's a high credit for the city to be there. Um, I got, I did not, I left early in the um, uh, from concert in the park because I still have a, a spouse who's recovering from a surgery, not easy to go, so I'm pretty close to home. But I got the, I was watching, so I see Amanda and Heather here. Um, I uh, want to tell you, there's that program that kind of schools have, that was painting those uh, benches and things. That's been going on for about thirty-three years. For thirty-three years, they've been teaching kids who qualified skills for jobs. Over a period of seven years, they eradicated um, the blackberries around the um, lake, Green River, because the city, we couldn't get a handle on it. It was just too, too much work. And, and they, like this year, they have seven, two kids, and they work for us. We don't pay for anything. It's, it's, it's a uh, it's a school summer program to prepare kids who need help to be able to learn jobs. And a lot of kids, uh, and if you want to talk to anybody in the audience here, wants to talk to that person, a lot of kids have gone on to to get jobs, women who've never been able to handle the job. Unfortunately, I had, I just found out on Friday night when I stopped and spent about a half an hour with the kids and with the uh, three um, adult advisors. The county superintendent, Allen Harper, has cut the program. So this will be the first, next year, the first time, probably thirty-five, forty years. I believe in forty years, that we will no longer have that to be able to help out. We helped out a lot here. They have done, they do all kinds of stuff. We had a city attorney at one time that, I won't mention his name, doesn't matter, but uh, that city attorney, she told, you know, she cut it all down. You know, so we couldn't do it anymore, so they went up to GIs. Soon as we got into the turn, they said, no, that's not a problem. And that, then it came that, they do lots and lots of work. That's just, that's just part of it, that they've done for us. Um, they've done the work at Green Horn Park probably for twenty years. So anyway, um, I would encourage you to go to the uh, uh, to the uh, County Board of Education, which happens, I think, around two o'clock or three o'clock, I believe it's next Wednesday. You know, call down to the county office, don't let people down and support, if you support, if they're down to support, you know. So, um, I want to, I want to commend YPD. We've got, these guys, you know, people give us a feeling they're not doing anything with animals. They got eleven dogs down there for animal control. They got eleven dogs, and they do a heck of a job in adopting those dogs out. And I know that they were down cleaning, because, and I, this, before all you came on, the number one thing for one of our council people was animal control. That's how we got, you know, I think, and as you came on, I mean, we made some changes down there, but um, they're doing a great job getting out there. So I, I appreciate you guys, what you're doing. I also appreciate that your officers, officers are safe from being, from both their cars being hit by a drunk driver here in town, and, and one of them being totaled. Um, you know, these guys, they put up with a lot of, a lot of stuff, and I appreciate it. And that's the only reason I'm reaching out to you this one, for no other reason. Um, I would like to, I've, I've already asked the Chief if he could go to the Facebook and kind of with things, and I appreciate that, Chief. Um, I know that if you uh, want to see the enforcement ban, so we do need to, to add it. I would like to see that to a regular meeting so we can discuss it, because again, it was a ban that was passed. We didn't have the beds at the time, we still don't, so we need to figure out if we're going to enforce, how we're going to enforce it. We don't have the beds. We always go down the jam, and the DA, no, the DA's not going to do anything about it. We put them in there, they're going to be kicked loose, because the DA's not going to file charges. So we need, we need somehow do that, so I'm at the Supreme. I would like to ask for two things. Uh, well, three things actually. The Greenway, if you could just maybe in, maybe in July, get a surprise cleanup on the Greenway, I want to start doing that. And if you don't mind, I know that the previous city manager was working with Caltrans, we need them to clean up their area of Wariqua Creek, which is down near Minor Street. If we get a bad rain, and that's what I, I walked with Jason. If we get a bad rain, there are sags laying in there, there's everything. And you get it, then just overflow and come right up. That, it's not a lot of business there. Um, but now, this is a lot of clothes, but it's just something we need to do. So, and I'm, I'm gonna uh, I guess I'll be, okay. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. For my report tonight, um, I just want to uh, report that I attended the LAFCO meeting on June tenth. I also attended the city-sponsored rabies clinic um, last week on the twelfth as an observer. And there were sixty-two rabies vaccinations that were um, administered. And it was great to see Dr. Essex and his team in um, action. And um, there was also uh, some county representatives there. Um, so it was um, a really positive experience for everybody. Um, I also attended Golden City Days. Uh, my family and I went on Sunday. We really enjoyed the pancakes, especially. Thank you so much, uh, Chief Lemus. Um, let me see. Um, I received a weed abatement notice, and the first thing that I did was, oh my gosh, did they look at my, my back alley? So uh, I got those taken care of as well. Mr. McCoy, my, my weeds are gone now. Um, and it's my understanding, I'm receiving a lot of phone calls from people about tall weeds. And I've just been referring people to uh, our automated system, um, see Click Fix to make a report or to uh, fill out a report in person at City Hall. And I've let people know that it's not something that is going to just um, be um, looked at overnight since code enforcement is really busy right now. Um, I would uh, have a couple of requests. I would like uh, staff to publicize the fireworks ban for the Fourth of July, just as a reminder to everybody. As well as um, reminding um, everybody that we do have a concert in the park this Friday night, beginning at six thirty, right after the Farmer's Market. And that's all I have for this evening. So if there's no other business, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at eight forty-two.